All righty then. We have an open meeting and we do have a public comment opportunity for anyone who would have a comment to make. Those discussions are very limited, but because they're not on the agenda, so we can't take any action on anything a person might bring up, but just so that you know, we have that opportunity. Sam?
I just want to say that I noticed that there was a big leak that was repaired by the water department, by the DPW department, and it was so significant that we may not, you know, from what I understand, we may not need a well as quickly as we had thought. Is that right?
Well, I would tell you that the work that they have done over the past probably eight or nine months, since having some new employees in particularly the water department and a new DPW superintendent, we have found, not we, I love the we, I've never picked up a shovel, but the team has, I don't know, stuffed a tremendous number of leaks, significant leaks, and as a result, our pumps aren't working as hard and we're using less water because we're not losing more, you know, water than we were ever supposed to. I know that there's a gallons percentage that they could talk to us about a significant. Mark, are you aware of that?
Well, just that one leak the other day, I believe they said that they found and it's been leaking for some time before the crew that's in there now, but they said it's a hundred gallons a minute, so this is what, a hundred and forty thousand gallons a day, which-
It's a lot of water.
Is a quarter of what the town's used to.
Wow. That could be very good use. DEP could be very happy about that, in addition to the one that was behind the police, under Sandy building.
That was down by the old dump, fire station.
So, not sure about that, Sam. We might still need a well, only because if one well goes down, the other well cannot supply the entire town of Barry.
Yeah.
So, we need backup and redundancy, but what, the work-
It's good news.
I'm not mad at that disparity, I'm just saying that's what, because I understand we have a water problem and I've got to be careful about that.
We do, yeah. No, thank you for bringing that up, because they worked hard and they fixed a very serious long-term leak-
Yeah.
-the other day, which is having a great impact now. Our pumps are shutting off, have a rest period.
Twelve hours, I believe.
Yeah, and we pump a lot less water.
And it used to be twenty-four seven.
They were on twenty-four seven.
Oh, really?
So, that was a good point to bring up.
All I know is that when I used to, when the water gets turned out, it's always there.
Well, we'd like to keep it that way. Okay, having no other public comment that I see, let's move on to the approval of meeting minutes-
Thank you, Sam.
...that have been presented, starting with the October sixth meeting minutes that have been prepared and were provided to you via email and are now before us. Those taking a look at October sixth?
Make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of October sixth, 2025, for release.
I'll second that.
We have a motion being seconded to approve the meeting minutes of October sixth, 2025, for public release. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We also have September twenty-fourth to take a look at, and those have been provided. I'm sorry, is it the twenty, I have September eighteenth, I'm sorry. September eighteenth is my stack.
Yeah, so twenty-fourth is a regular meeting.
I just give it a shift around.
Yep.
Okay, so the September twenty-fourth meeting minutes, if we could address those.
I move to approve meeting minutes of September twenty-fourth, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion being seconded to approve September twenty-four meeting minutes, and those will be for public release. Those in favor?
Aye.
Moving along, we have two other sets of meetings. These are executive sessions, meetings, minutes, and they will not be approved for release, but just for our records. September eighteenth, I have a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes for Thursday, September eighteenth, on 2025, and those will not be for release at this time.
I'll second that.
We have a motion being seconded to approve September eighteenth, 2025, executive session, but not for release. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, moving on to September, oh, yeah, September twenty-four meeting minutes, got it, the executive session.
I move to approve the meeting minutes of September twenty-fourth, 2025, the executive session, not for release at this time.
Second.
We have a motion being seconded to approve the September twenty-fourth executive session part of the twenty-fourth meeting, but not for release. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, having made their way through that, I do believe that we have, I think we'll go directly to, we can go directly to town administrator report.
All right, I gave you all a copy of it. So, continue to work on procurement, as always. The bid packages for the DPW vehicles were awarded and contracted to Advantage Truck Group.
Excellent.
The bid package for the paving will publish on October twenty-third and will be opened on November tenth. The bid package for the heating will also be published on October twenty-third and will be opened on the twelfth of November. Bid package for the sewer compact loader was published on ten-nine and is due ten-twenty-seven, and I've completed the contract for the engineering services for the well location and sent that to David Craven for his approval, so he can get that signed if it all looks okay to him. For the grants, we're still working on the High Plains Park. We've identified trash cans, working with Tim, that he thinks will work there.
Great.
And Tom George is getting quotes for the fence repair. The Green Communities grant is fully executed, the contract's fully executed, and I have a meeting set up next, is that next week, on next, October twenty-seventh, with CMR PC, National Grid, and Guardian, for the next steps for that. We've had another anonymous public records request from that same Mass Records Act. It shows a copy of the last appointment slip for the town accountant, copies of contract with Mask Munifin, copies of MMA emails sent for job placement ads from July one to October one, copy of letter sent by Inspector General regarding the allegations of double dipping, and that is in quotation marks, because those are the requesters' words, not mine, copies of all correspondence to the Inspector General regarding required changes. We had another one for One Sixty Lane Road from a Jesse Russell of GZA. Jesse is a scientist, as he or she signed the email, looking for any public records for permits violations, tank, et cetera, for One Sixty Lane Road. And as is typical, a lot of times we'll get requests for bids for plant holders from certain bids, and somebody from the American Procurement Council, Inc., wants the sewer bid package for the compact loader, once it becomes available.
Now, we have one for permits violations and tanks, and for what period were they looking for that?
Just anything.
Since forever?
Anything we could find, yes. So, I emailed all the boards and commissions and committees and departments.
Typical.
We actually don't have a lot.
Yeah, it's typical when a property might be up for sale, that they do an environmental study to see if there's any impact, so they'll reach out to us, the fire chief, conservation, any records that might be available.
So, we actually don't have much to send, but that will be sent, I believe I have everything now, so that'll probably be sent tomorrow. As far as meetings, I mean, I'm not going to read through all of those, you guys can read those. And then other work, oh, the Green Communities through CMR PC, that's just about done. Sandy helped me out with that as well, with the electricity use, and it should be submitted next week. I just have a couple of things from the building department that I need. I mean, there isn't anything else of note, I don't think. That's pretty much it? Yes, Sam?
Sam, do you have a question?
Did you say some of the requests were anonymous?
Yes.
Yes, they're all anonymous.
Yep.
You have to.
Even though-
Yep, doesn't matter.
They didn't sign it?
No.
Well, there's an email attached, but we don't know who's on the other side of the email.
There's an email, but it's not one that you can find out who it is, and that's, it's something that's legal, that's appropriate, irritating, but-
So, you know that the government-
Yes.
-you get something anonymous, huh?
Yep. Yep, you still have to answer it.
And you can't charge anybody, right?
Not for something like this. It doesn't take, what they're wanted, doesn't take enough time to, it would take more time to charge it.
No, but you can't charge anybody, because you don't know who would have charged.
This is true.
Right?
This is true.
Well, somebody, somehow, somebody could figure out how it was, I guess, I don't know. Okay, so, we haven't had many of those anonymous ones, we usually have individuals tied to the request, okay. Select board reports, please do not think that this is all my stuff, so I would like you to all chime in when and if appropriate.
Put some stuff on there.
I know, so, department inventory, we are working on and haven't had a lot of time to really delve into that with any kind of specificity, but I think, Mark, you've been sort of working on figuring out, what is it we exactly have in every building, every place, every piece of equipment, so that we could have an inventory that we would feel, if an insurance claim were to be put in, that we would have information that would be able to substantiate our claim.
Yeah, we're going to have to really buckle down on that and move forward, because everything that I had, anything that I had done, it had to do with basically the DPW, because that's what we agreed to in the meeting, we voted on, and, but as far as everything else, I think all the department heads have to do a list of tools and equipment, what they have, as far as inventorying, we have to-
Do you think that, what would you feel, Melanie, would be a reasonable timeframe to get that done?
Well, I would like for them to start submitting it with their annual reports every year, which should come in January anyway, after the calendar year ends, if you do a calendar year here, so I can notify them now that it'll be due with the annual report, that way they have a couple of few months to get it done, if that works for you guys.
I think, as before, I mean, I would certainly go and help with the DPW director with that. Rich, I've, you know, I don't know if it's something that we need to talk, vote on, for you helping with the fire and-
Yeah, I mean, whoever needs help, I'm, you know, I'm certainly around you, around whatever, but-
Right.
It's an important task, and if we have a natural disaster, we have a fire in our community, we lose a building, we don't, honestly, I don't think we know what's in it.
No, we don't.
And so, I think we really need to get a capture of what the taxpayers own and the condition of it, the age of it.
Yeah.
And what can be discarded.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
Which, our trucks, that we're getting rid of, they're up on municipal as we speak.
Oh, they are?
Yep.
I would not know that.
Yep.
We don't have a policy for disposition?
What's that?
We don't have a policy of, for disposition, to like dispose of town goods?
We do, we follow the statute, which is first, you know, go to, try to get rid of them, and through the town, we do, you know, a town auction for some kinds of things, and so-
In the past, we've done municipal auctions, international, things like that, so it's all legit, you know?
With the big equipment?
Yep. We've gone through the equipment at the DPW trucks, excess surplus, stuff that we don't, you know, a lot of it's close to being junk, but we went through and listed all that stuff throughout the winter, and they had just put it up recently.
Can I make a recommendation?
You may.
Can we-
I'm not a department head.
Can we make a form for departments to fill out of what they're disposing of, how they're disposing of it, and make sure that the boards have votes to dispose of it before it goes up on municipal, so that we know what has gone out, that the board is all aware of it, where it's gone, and how much-
Well, nothing's gone yet, so I mean, you could probably do that, I mean, you'll be awarded the bid, I don't know how, you know, when the bids are all timed out, I mean, I don't know if we're able to-
Quite frankly, I don't think we're going to get a lot of people looking to take the stuff we've got on municipal.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's just a legit way to get rid of it.
Yeah, I think, I think it's just good to have the paper trail, and good to know that all of the select board members are aware of what's going, how it's going, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, no, that's-
Yeah, it's a good thing.
So, starting next time, I'll make up a form.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, Valley Road Bridge update, and you all know that the Valley Road Bridge has been closed now for a period of months, due to the fact that the state has indicated it unsafe. The state did work with our DPW superintendent to say that there may be a way to shore things up for, through an engineering study, and thus, after that, to making some changes in the, shall we say, the support system of the bridge, for a one-way. In other words, you would be able to, with a light, go one-way, because it's just not, it's, it's going to cost us about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars just to get it, shall we say, one lane, probably useful until 2029 or 2030, when the state will come in and actually fix the bridge. Now, we could decide not to do this, we're going to pay this out of chapter ninety money, and obviously, chapter ninety money, we'd like to be able to restore roads that are going to stay roads for a long time. This is one that now we have an engineering study, I think it's nine thousand dollars that we have allocated to engineering, is to do exactly what the state engineers have asked us to do in order to make it a safe, safe, one-way bridge. It would still preclude large trucks going over it, and I'm sure there'll be a weight limit that they will give to us.
Yeah, there will be a weight limit.
So, we have authorized the engineering, and we suspect that there will be no, it will not be open until, at best, in the midsummer, because by the time the state does what the state does, and then they actually, we get in there with a crew that can do it, it will definitely be into the summer months, we think, just as an update. Grant awards, Melanie, I think we do have a police department grant award, thanking the chief for his work?
Yes, so Chief Foren sent over, he got a JAG grant for twenty-eight thousand dollars for drug enforcement and detective work. Sandy, I'll give this to you after. Municipal road safety grant of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and forty cents for dedicated traffic safety patrols, which is for distracted impaired driving. Separate grants, three separate grants from the Stetson School and Tom Forrest Memorial Foundation totaling almost fifteen thousand dollars, allowing us, allowing them to replace and upgrade all desktop computers at the PD, there were nine computers. Maya Wellness Grant for three thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-nine cents to support officers' mental health. So, total received to date is seventy-one thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. And he has some in process, Seven Hills Foundation renegotiating a pilot to facilitate a cruiser, Chobin Regional School District to assist with school resource officer funding, Maya Risk Management Grant for traffic safety signage and equipment.
There you go.
Good effort, there's no question.
Yes, absolutely.
Now, also, that we have the information about the school resource officer update, we know with the loss of the override, it's impossible to stay, to maintain the current staffing patterns in the police department, that would give us twenty-four seven coverage, plus the coverage every day, one hundred and eighty days, at the high school, middle high school, where the school resource officer spends his or her most of their time. The school, we've met with the school to see if they can be of some help and assistance with this, and the school has submitted a grant for thirty thousand dollars, whether they will get it or not, but they're hopeful, but it's always an iffy thing when you're trying to get grants in this particular environment, financial environment. So, at any rate, there's work on both ends, from the chief's end and from the superintendent, in order to try to make certain that we can fund this school resource officer. Now, some people would say, why do we need that, but I think it's pretty obviously why we need that. If there is a place where there could be some significant issues of concern on a daily basis, that could be over the top compared to anything else that could happen to the town, it's going to happen at that middle high school, or the elementary school, and not having the police there, presence there on a daily basis would probably be short-sighted on our part. So, we're working very hard with the chief in order to try to keep twenty-four seven coverage and the school resource officer. Twenty-four seven coverage may not be possible for us for the entire year, based upon what it costs us for overtime, and the, it just may not be possible. So, we know we can't do the school resource officer and seven, seven-day twenty-four service, so they're making some, they're making some adjustments, and the chief is working very hard on grants and other things to try to mitigate the losses that we had with our budget presentation.
Was this paid for by three towns?
That, well, technically, if the, if the school resource officer is paid for by a grant that the schools get, that will be pretty simple. Currently, and since its inception, the school resource officer has been paid totally by the town of Barry.
How do they change that?
Well, okay, that when, and I was the superintendent there when they made this decision, and the decision was not to have this be a school employee that the school would pay for, because the police did not want not to have control over this, over how this person would be trained, because if they're there to do police work, the school superintendent shouldn't be in charge of that. I was okay with that, the school committee was okay with that. However, we do believe that, that there should be an effort on the other town's part, that this should be paid for, at least a portion of it, by the school, school district, even though the school district doesn't have the opportunity to manage that employee, that they would pay that money to the town of Barry, in order to keep the school resource officer there full-time. So, that is in the works, and, you know, and everybody is very cooperative in trying to work this through, because obviously, the schools want that school resource officer there, the chief knows he should have a school resource officer there, we know that we should have a school resource officer there, so together we'll figure something out. So, that's where sort of that is. So, that's a very critical piece of staffing that we really have to work on. Sad news is, the Chamberlain Hill Root Road Repair Work Grant for the repair, that would have been the resurfacing, and I think it was also working with the runoff and water issues on the roads. We had hoped to have that grant, but that, a lot of these grants have been held up, so we will not have access to that grant this year, so therefore, we will not be doing that project, we feel badly about that, but there's not much we can do. We've also sent information around, looking for a committee, and we'll be looking, obviously, for people who might want to serve on a committee, to explore the idea of going to town meeting, asking that the town meeting people would be interested in the Community Preservation Act, and what that could or could not do for the town. It's a way in which to modify how we do certain projects, it's something that's supported by the state, it used to be a fifty-fifty, not so much anymore, but anyway, we're going to be studying it and bringing it to the town. So, it's been to the town meetings before and been voted down, but we'll try again. Upcoming union negotiation and contract renewals, we do have police, and we do have DPW with their contracts expired, this is the last year of a three-year, so those negotiations would need to proceed, probably, or begin, it usually takes many months, so we will start that work and hope that we will have resolution by June. Update on personnel policy, we have lots of updates to do. Would you say that's fair?
Yes, I would say that's fair, and I did not, all the new policies that we had made and submitted and were accepted by the Inspector General's office, I need to have all of you sign them.
Yeah.
I know that we were voted on, but they need to be signed, and then I can send those out to the department heads to share with their departments, and at the same time, I'm going to ask them to look at the personnel policy and send any requests that they have as well.
And the personnel policy's about this thick?
Yeah.
And I think there's some things in there that are outdated, because it's been around a while.
Yes, very much so. There's a lot of things in there that need to be explained better and, as well, so.
Henry Woods, building roof discussion, and I will go to Richard and Mark on that thing.
Well, that can either-
Yeah.
I found some shingles out front, and I got the police drone, they were nice enough to come up and fly it over the roof, and we have some missing shingles up in the middle somewhere up there, and we really haven't done anything to address it, and I do think it's pretty important, seeing how, they're not going to get any, they're not going to fix themselves, and we've got to get somebody up there to fix it before it gets worse.
Do you think we should have, you know, a company get up there and take a look before snow flies?
Definitely.
Is that a slate roof?
No.
No.
It used to be slate, when it was replaced, it was make-believe looks like slate.
Yeah, when the elevator got put in, they took the slate off.
Yeah.
Because I have a big pile of slate that I've been sitting on.
But you were hoping we were going to put it on the roof, or?
No, it was, it was something that someone was, had available from a slate company, and they asked me if I wanted it, I thought they have land, I thought I'd store it with no particular, I also have soapstone that I was going to use for a floor sometime, but I haven't got it.
Don't do it. I have soapstone, and I spend my life cleaning soapstone, too.
On the floor of the bathroom?
Just say it, don't do it. Yes, don't do it.
With heating underneath?
I thought it was, yes, I thought it was a great idea, till I had it.
But isn't it nice and warm when you're on the house?
I don't care if it's warm or not, it's dirty, and it's hard to keep clean, very hard. Anyway, nobody cares about that, but just to say, the soapstone will not find its way into my home again.
So, we want to get a contract, how do you want to handle that?
Well, I would suspect we have a couple locals that have been, just gave us some information on the roof down at the salt shed-
Correct.
-we could start there.
Yep.
Kid Lucco's a big operation, they were the ones who got the contract and did the library, and they did the repair, Kid Lucco did the repair at the town hall maybe three years ago now, so they do a lot of community work. I know that they, with other locals, would go up, look and say, yeah, this is really bad, or at least give us an idea about what engineering company could, you know, we could vote to authorize to give us some free information.
But do we need to do an RFP, or?
Well, we will.
Or just the plumber, we're just going to ask them, the plumber, to go on the roof?
Yeah, because they may say, we can replace these six shingles and don't worry about it for the season.
We should have somebody take a look.
Well, the scope of the job isn't really that vast up there, but it just has to be done, you know, from what I can see from the drone.
Probably by liability, so we want that tall roof to fall off, and they're just looking at three shingles that fell off.
Big power is just getting up there, it's forty feet up.
Well, I know the library roof, they had lifts and so forth that they used for that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, one way to get up there is to get the fire ladder, that's the way with the library, we brought them over, and they brought the ladder up there, and we were able to get contractors up there to look at the roof.
And save fifteen hundred dollars on renting a lift.
Yes.
That's right. Okay, so just that we need to get out of the roof before snow flies, so that at our next meeting, perhaps we'll have something to vote on.
Okay.
Employees evaluation discussion, Melanie, is that yours? Or is that?
Um, yeah, do we, do we do them? Rich and I were talking about that.
I would say the answer to that is, I think some of the individual, no, I would suspect that last year, DPW did not have any, that was the place where they really spent a lot of time with evaluations. Fire department did them, again, I don't know, because we were between fire chiefs at that point, so I don't know what happened there. As far as, we were in between three different TAs, and I would suspect your team was not probably evaluating.
Okay, but typically, they've been done in the past-
I would say typically, probably not, at least in this building.
Okay.
Would you say that's fair?
Well, I'd like to see them get done, you know, for all the departments, and maybe Melanie has some kind of standardized form that department heads could work off of.
Indeed, I do.
I think it's important-
Oh, definitely.
-for professional development, for growth, for a whole lot of reasons, and when I was a fire chief, I had to sit and write thirty of them.
Yeah, I would just say that the, there's particular language in the contracts relative to the chief, at least what he does with his team, the same thing with DPW, and I know those weren't done last year because we were in transition. So, the fire department, again, that is part of their personnel stuff, I know that's been done in the past, I know it probably wasn't done this year because we had one chief leaving and another chief coming on on April first, so. So, yeah, it'll be something that we'll hear more about, right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, now we come to what people have come here for this evening, I believe, a possible vote on the offer to purchase one thousand West Street, and I think that would be something that, Melanie, if you could walk us through, and other board members could provide information, and the people who are here, obviously, have questions and concerns, and so on and so forth.
So, I wasn't here for this, is Nathan here?
He just-
So, I wasn't here for the start of this whole process, so I don't have much initial information on it. I did print out for you the information from our software, as far as what it's valued at, what the tax title account is at, which is seventy-five thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-seven cents, so that would need to be satisfied with any sale price initially. The initial, is this the new contract?
It's the new one, it's seven hundred and fifty.
Okay, yeah, so the initial contract came in with the town, with the, wanting the town to pay closing costs, which I do not recommend happen, because then you're setting a precedent to pay closing costs for every foreclosed property, and our tax title attorney, Ron Berenson, agrees as well. He's the one that would do all the closing paperwork for us, and he estimates it would be about twenty-five hundred dollars to do it. So, it looks like, should we wait for Nathan to come back to represent your-
He just did that, maybe.
Okay, here he comes.
Nope, nope. I, I'll hold him.
So it looks like the buyer agrees to pay the sum of eighty-one thousand dollars. Nathan gets eight percent um net from the sale. So we will just barely break even.
Make taxes.
Yeah. But it's also, I'm not sure how long this has been on the market for.
Um.
Since June, maybe? May or June, somewhere like that.
Yeah, so six months.
It was early in the summer.
It's the only offer that I know of.
Yes, as far as I know, it's the only offer that we've had. So rather than just sit on a property that, you know, may or may not sell for more at some point in time.
It needs extensive cleanup, we all know that.
I would say get rid of it.
Yeah, and that would, and that would be their responsibility, correct?
Yes.
Not ours.
Yep, and puts it back on the tax.
Yeah, and every.
Tax, well, so.
I mean, in an average house of three fifty, four hundred thousand, you're going to come out with six grand. So three thousand dollars every six months, we're always three thousand dollars away, you know what I mean? We didn't, but it's, it's going, the clock's ticking, so.
And I believe I've spoken with each of you separately um about Mr. Fournier doing a, Fournier doing a park on the land, um which he has, um he wrote him a letter of permission outlining a few conditions and he signed a release for liability, um a whole, full harmless release for doing that.
Now, uh is it true that you're going to have to, you would like to use it for your business? And thus, would, would there have to be some zoning changes on this?
So my first plan is to clean the property up, get rid of all the trash, get rid of campers, make it look good again. Eventually, I would, I will bring it to the planning board to have it rezoned from R eighty-two commercial.
Mm-hmm.
But that's going to be a work in progress with um cleaning it all up and getting it ready for that.
And you're, and you're, I, I see your company is a tree company, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're a tree service.
And you are currently with your tree company on Pleasant Street, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, White Terrace is commercial, right?
Yeah, White Terrace Commercial on Mr. Graves, I believe.
Mr. Graves as well, so it's not like, so I don't think that's going to be a problem.
So two adjacent properties.
Two adjacent, two abutting properties are zoned commercially.
Yep.
And looking at online, that Melanie sent me the link to, it only needs a hundred and thirty feet of frontage to go commercial. That property's at a hundred and thirty-seven. So even if I wanted to put a house, I want to say I'd have to get a variance because it doesn't meet the new zoning regulation.
No, is it your intention to put homes?
If it's not zoned, if I can't switch it to commercial, yes, we will most likely put a house on.
Okay. So is.
I make a motion that we accept the offer as presented.
Melanie, do you have any other concerns that have been brought to your attention by our attorney or anything?
Nope.
So, okay.
And what is the offer exactly?
Um you have a contract in your packet. I don't really want to read the whole thing.
I think we get about, this closing cost, about sixty-two, about, so sixty-nine is the valuation. Assess land value fifty and ten, sixty-nine.
Did you paint it?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to auth- or to accept the contract as prepared for the transfer of this property to.
One thousand West Street.
Yeah, yeah, one thousand West Street, but to Joe, what is, will it be to you, Joe, or is there a co- corporation or?
Um it will be my in-laws are purchasing it.
Okay.
It will be in their name and then once it's paid, I'll pay it off and switch it to the tree service.
Gotcha.
Did you want their name?
Yeah, Marshall. Thank you. So this would be Patricia R. Cokie and John J. Cokie Senior, Town Farm Road, Winchton, Mass. Would be actually the purchasers, correct?
Correct.
Perfect, thank you. We have a motion made and seconded to authorize the uh purchase of the property on one thousand West Street to Patricia R. Cokie and John J. Cokie Senior, thirty-one Town Farm Road, Winchton, Massachusetts, zero one four seven five. We have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Anything, Mark?
I'm good.
Anything? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, looks like a vote.
Congrats.
Thank you.
I can't wait till you start cleaning it up.
Yeah. Your neighbors will be very happy.
And as the paper gets signed, you'll see all the fleet of trucks going right there.
I love it. I love it.
Yeah.
That'll be great. It's, well, you know, some people will be applauding who live near you, who have you, near you now. So that'd be great. Okay, um holiday schedule for town departments, we're seeking a vote. And Melanie, could you describe what we've decided, which was um a night, four-hour?
Half-day.
A half-day.
Half-day.
And that's four hours for people obviously working the eight-hour day. So if you start at seven AM, it's four hours and then you can go home before the holidays.
Well, unless you work ten hours.
Yeah, well, okay, you've got a ten-hour.
So that's why we're just saying a half a day from what you normally work.
Gotcha.
Good point.
Okay, it gets very sticky.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of people doing a lot of work. Okay, so that is for the day before Thanksgiving and that is for the day before Christmas, correct?
And New Year's.
And New Year's.
Yeah.
That's usually.
Okay, so um we have discussion, we have a motion?
I make a motion that we authorize town employees to take a half a day on Wednesday, November twenty-sixth, the day before Thanksgiving, Wednesday, December twenty-fourth, the day before Christmas or Christmas Eve, and Wednesday, December thirty-first, New Year's Eve.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to authorize the use of a half-day schedule on the Wednesday, November twenty-sixth, day before Thanksgiving, December twenty-fourth, Christmas Eve, and December thirty-one, New Year's Eve for all town employees. That would be one half of the day generally assigned for work. Those in favor?
Aye.
I want to say thank you for that because that's very generous of the board to offer all three of those half-days.
Well, I, I seldom if ever have asked anybody out of, beyond their work hours to do something that they haven't done.
Right.
So work goes both ways and we're thankful for the work that they do.
Employees and departments, so.
And we have a couple resignations just to authorize here. We have the Council on Aging, a resignation for Susan Milquen and a Council on Aging resignation of Barry Allman. I believe the town administrators had the opportunity to chat with at least one of them.
I have spoken with Mr. Allman. We had a really good conversation. He spoke very highly of Betty Jo, um but he does have concerns that the Council on Aging is only advisory and is not able to advise in any capacity. Ms. Milquen, I have not spoken to her yet. She is on my list to call.
Okay, so we have the resignations to, to have a motion to accept those?
Yeah, I move to through the Council on Aging resignation of Susan Milquen and Barry Allman.
So we have a motion made and seconded. Seconded to um accept the resignations of Susan Milquen and Barry Allman from the Council on Aging. Those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the Council on Aging Appointment Application. We have David Raymond, who has, is seeking to serve on the Council on Aging. And we would like to have the opportunity to appoint him potentially this evening. Do we have a motion?
Um I make a motion, we appoint David S. Raymond to the Council on Aging.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to appoint David S. Raymond to serve on the Council on Aging and that appointment to be effective immediately. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a wage authorization for a new cemetery clerk. And that wage authorization is for Amy Cassavan, cemetery clerk, up to ten hours per week at twenty dollars and fifty cents per hour.
It's all correct and at last.
Oh, we're correct.
She's going to be great.
Good.
I make a motion to, oh, for a wage authorization for Amy Cassavan, cemetery clerk, and that was weak, twenty dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to appoint, at a rate of twenty dollars and fifty cents per hour, Amy Cassavan as the cemetery clerk, effective immediately. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, looks like a vote, Liz. Is the same, is the sign up?
What sign?
No.
It's just. Oh, the posts, the posts have to set.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I kept saying I've gone by there twenty times and I haven't even noticed. Okay, so um I think we're at a point of looking for a motion to adjourn? Before that?
I appear to have missed public comments.
You did.
By forgetting the paper that I meant to bring and having to go all the way back home again. So can I make my public comment?
Sure.
Uh Doug and I attended the meeting in OCAM last week.
Yep.
It was very impressive. Those people were prepared.
Those who, the OCAM folk?
Everybody, yeah.
Yes.
Everybody from OCAM. Every department participated and had something worthwhile to say. Now, I hope, I hope that this never becomes a reality for us.
Mm-hmm.
But if it does, I hope we can be as united as OCAM. The fire chief alone should have made that sighting board, just get up and leave in embarrassment. I mean.
Right.
His reasons were very, anyway, I said I would bring Richard the paper that I picked up there, so.
Yeah, so I just want to echo um Liz's sentiments because I was on Zoom through the entire hearing. And what a phenomenal job each of the speakers did. Each department was represented. And um there was also citizens that got to, to, to speak. It was very well done. Uh very much thought put into what was said and how it was said. And the facts just flowed all night like.
They had, all the boards had to have worked together on this. And that's what I think we should be prepared to do. Now, inside this packet that I'm giving Richard is a YouTube link if you missed the, to, to the meeting.
Great.
Yeah, I, I would say watch it. It was, it was very well done.
It was very impressive and we can use all those various same reasons.
And a couple more.
And a couple more.
I think.
Can I scan that tomorrow?
Yes, yes, of course.
Oh, and I wanted to thank Richard for being interested in this and Mark for coming to the standout for the OCAM people today. That was good.
We're all in it together. We gotta.
I think we're all on the same team here.
Yeah.
I knew what a sign, of course, I've always been very concerned about signs. The sign that's going to go up, is that going to be a sign where citizens can be informed?
No.
No.
Of what's going on in the town.
No.
No, it's just replacing the old welcome to Barry sign, that's all.
Are the citizens going to be able to find some sort of signage? Because every time the, the, the committee, the sign committee.
Oh, are you pointing at me?
No, no, I'm not pointing at you at all. I'm just saying, the sign, not you. Speaks about why the town of Barry can't have.
It can, it's just that there are people who do not want it and will, in, be in opposition to the area on the common.
Yeah, I understand. But every time this, um, what's her name?
Lucy.
Lucy Allen comes in with all sorts of pictures, pictures and everything about why she feels she needs whatever that needs to be. However, we still haven't, but there's never been an alternative about how the citizens are notified of what's going on. At one time, on a regular basis, you know, we had the deer checking station. We had a sign that says, there's a meeting, there's this going on, there's that going on. We don't have anything. Now, I know that we have YouTube, Facebook and my face and all those things that we have and people look at. But that place has always been the location where, where the citizens know what's going on. Now, maybe we need to change. I mean, what I've been doing on my own is I've been calling the school.
We know of them.
But I've been calling the school.
Well, the school puts it on their signs now.
Yeah, I've been calling the school and I've been reminding them and they've been very cooperative.
Correct.
But however, I'm, I'm a senior person, I may not be around. Maybe we need to figure out what to do so that the citizens know that there's something going on. That they expect it. This is when we have a town meeting. They expect seeing something when they come into town. Maybe that's not the best place for it. Maybe it needs to be, but we're not, there's no resolution. There's just a lot of talk about.
Well, there's not even a lot of talk, very frankly. The, the other place that's probably the best and most prominent place to put it is down in front of Wholesome Foods, sort of in that little triangle that the state owns, that we could, according to my conversations with Senator Durant, Durant, that they would probably say, yeah, go ahead. Um there's already a little um memorial there, I believe, to the Trufflow Square or something. So we probably could put it there. The only issue that is of concern to the police department is that that is a very busy interface or intersection. Now that the, now that the pharmacy is gone and Valley Road is not really open, other than to people who are going to live down there, um it, it may, it may be a different situation because it's less busy without the, without the pharmacy there for sure. But that's a, that's a piece of property that could be something else that people are coming in and out of. The, the more I drive down there and look at that, it seems a reasonable place to put the sign. It's a very commercial place. I don't think people would be upset with a, you know, a neon kind of electronic sign. But they're not cheap. You're talking twelve, fifteen thousand dollars would be minimum for that, maybe more now. But I, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to that. I'm, I would just tell you, it's never without an absolute fight to the finish with a historical commission ever going to go on this common.
Well, maybe we should look into, like I talked about a long time ago, maybe we should look into a projector sign that it projects on the surface and it doesn't.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Like the town hall or something.
I don't know what they, I don't think about it, but I know that there's some pretty uh good projection signs out there and we wouldn't have to build anything. We just put on some sort of surface like, um, I don't know, the town hall. Somewhere there's a big area that we could utilize.
Project it, I see what you mean, yeah.
But we, but we do need a place to put it.
I would just say, and just, just not to be a contrarian, but the, the OCAM has nothing. They don't have anything and they had so many signs over that town. I couldn't drive anywhere that I didn't know when their meetings were and what they were upset about and how long they'd been upset about it. Uh and they didn't have a sign.
Don't they have a sign written on the route with twenty-two?
Well, yeah, but it's, it's just, you know, they, they put it there and it's, I, they, they put there, you know, it's once in a while a town meeting or something on it, but it's not electronic.
No, I'm not saying.
They just write it on there.
But it's what, the town needs to figure out one location where uh we can tell the citizens what's going on.
Well, it sounds like that State Triangle may be the best.
So I, I, I guess that, you know, we're not going to take a vote on it since it's not on the agenda, so.
Right, I'm aware of that.
Yeah.
But I'm just, I'm not, and I'm not, I'm not patting myself on the back saying it's, it's at the school because I call them regularly before every event and they're very cooperative and they understand.
But it's not a sign that people look for town business on, I admit.
So, and they've been very nice, but we need to figure it out. And one time Mark was going to rent the sign. Remember?
Mm-hmm.
And we were going to put it by the deer checking station. But.
Well, you haven't been around long enough.
I've been around the Barry sign. It used to be a scale. And on that scale was the deer checking station. So there was a concrete pad with a wearable scale. So people used to, years ago, pull whatever they wanted to weigh on the scale and weigh it.
With a dead deer in the back of the car.
Right there with the welcome to Barry sign?
Right behind the welcome to Barry sign. It was a concrete pad with a scale. And there was a, it was a building and the scale components were in the building. So you could weigh a small truck or whatever back, this, we're talking like nineteen hundreds, like that was a viable, you know, scale.
But anyone I moved into town who was there.
It was still there.
It was still there.
In seventy-six, yeah.
It was still there.
Anyway.
Meanwhile.
Meanwhile, back at the ranch. Okay, we heard about, heard about the sign.
So what?
We understand about.
So what's up, what's up plans against that? Remember now, as I said before, Lucille comes in with all her information, but there's never a final decision asked to an alternative.
Oh, yeah, on the agenda.
We, we, we talked about it.
We'll put it on the agenda for a, a discussion. We'll put it, we'll put it on, we'll put it on the agenda for a discussion and a final vote by the, by the, by the board. Right now, we don't have the money to do it, even if we wanted, even if we could put it in, right in, right in the bayonette, we don't have the money to do it.
No, but we should put it on the agenda.
Okay, we'll do that.
Great, thank you.
Can I weigh in on this, since I seem to be always interested in the sign situation?
Yes.
I think down by the Wholesome Foods is a better location, because no matter where you live in town, you go past there, but if you live in South Berry...
Yeah, they have one in South Berry, they have a...
But if you live in South Berry, you're not going to...
Yeah, but you can see the sign, you can see the sign that's on Norney Park.
Yeah.
Well, that gives you all the information.
Does that already have all the?
Oh, yes. It has, if there's a town meeting, or if there's, yeah, sure, voting, all that kind of stuff.
Well, then we, then what do we need another sign for?
Well, because no one goes down there.
Norney Park, for the people in South Berry.
Oh, pretty soon we'll need one on every corner, for every person.
Okay, I think we're entertaining.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
So, we're going to put it on the agenda, is that for sure?
We will.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
Those in favor?